Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Worcester City Council. This Monday, October 15th. It's now after 7:30 PM. Next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday, November 5, 2018. If you would please, Mr. Paulo, call the roll.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bostansik.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Hey, glad to see everyone on council is here. We do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. And at this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October 1, 2018 meeting.
So move.
Motion to approve by Mr. Silvestri is our second.
Second.
By Mr. Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes of October 1st, 2018 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke and members of the city council. Nice to be here this evening with you. Just some things to report or bring you updates on. A few things that happened since our last council meeting. I want to start out with sincere congratulations to Akron Brass. They celebrated 100 years of operation. They have been in our city 100 years officially as of December 28th, I think, this year. But they had the celebration when the company actually started over in Akron. So a great company. They've been a good community partner for the many years they've been here and look forward many years moving forward. They're a huge supplier for our fire and emergency equipment and worldwide. So they do lots of test things and let us try them out before they put them out into the world market. So good company. Had a chance to tour 180. Thank you to Jennifer for organizing that. It was 180 has been a great partner of our city for many, many years. And it was nice to go see the footprint of their operation because it's been a long time since I've been through that. And it's amazing what they have in that building and there's still some space to expand. So thank you, Jennifer, for organizing that. Was able to attend the Wayne County Community Foundation annual dinner where they honored Steve and Cheryl Shapiro with the Friend of Philanthropy Award. And well deserving by that couple. They've done many good things for our city and Steve's dad, Sam, ahead of him. And the family have done many generous things in our town and we should thank them for that. The NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner was this past Saturday and seemed well attended. I was not able to attend. My daughter got married that night and so I was busy in other realms.
Congratulations.
Went to the Rover Pipeline, held a meeting to just sort of a wrap-up type of thing. They have finished both lines and they are in production at this point in time. And so it was just sort of a wrap-up and thank you meeting. Really, it did not encounter our city very much. About the only place that it really came through was on a piece of land owned by Worcester Growth down behind the old Timken plant on the other side of the river, on the, I guess, the west side of the river that it actually came across. Any city-owned property. But other than that, that's sort of an update and happy to answer any questions and wish you well in the council meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no petitions and no one signed up tonight to speak. We do have one committee report on the infrastructure committee meeting we had prior to the regular meeting. Would you like to give us a synopsis there, Mr. Bostansik?
Thank you. As Mike said, we had a committee meeting at 6:30 right before our main meeting tonight. Roger Kovalarsik, a city engineer, gave us an overview of the 2018 projects his engineering staff had worked on as well as proposed projects for 2019. This, I made a few notes earlier as to some of the items that were done this year. I think it's important for the public at large to understand that these are very busy people and a lot does get done. So I'd like to go over, take about a minute, just to go through some of the highlights, if I could. Total, for the whole year, the city paved between ODOT and the city crews a total of 13 miles of roads. In 2018, we did asphalt and mill fill with between ODOT, larger city funds and capital improvement funds of three miles. We paid, did an asphalt mill fill of four miles, of a total of four miles of roads with the capital improvement funds and SCMR funds. Concrete repairs on 1.5 miles of roads. City crews did a total of three miles of paving. In 2018, city crews did a partial mill fill repairs on seven different Worcester streets. City crew also performed partial repairs using various methods such as chip and seal, scratch edges and partial scratches on about a dozen different streets in Worcester. And everybody's favorite subject, potholes, where city crews patched approximately 6,000 potholes this winter. Other engineering projects also included Liberty Street Signals, Madison Avenue Signals, Northwestern Sidewalks, East Wayne Waterline, East University Storm Sewer, West Liberty Sanitary Sewer, Melrose Culvert Replacement, and that's just a partial list. Public Property Maintenance Division also was busy sweep sweeping, storm sewer, inland cleanouts, park and urban forestry, repair catch basins, leaf pickup, that was easy to say, snow remove and snow removal and along also on the side of also doing about three miles of paving. For next year, the proposed asphalt resurfacing projects using capital improvements fund include about 4.6 miles, which includes part of all of 16 streets. Proposed 2019 concrete repairs include about 1.7 miles of road on either on or parts of seven different streets. And see here, in 2019, the proposed paving for city crews list includes all or part of 22 streets. And other 2019 projects also include Phase 2 Worcester Loop Bike Path, Daisy Way Extension, Holmes Caldwell Waterline, Venture Park, Kiefer Street Waterline, Palmer Street, Culvert and Chestnut Court Storm Sewer Projects. So that's pretty much the highlights. I thought it was very informative and learned a few things today and I hope some other, I hope we all did.
Well, thank you for that report. Appreciate it, Mr. Bostansik. And if you missed it, our city engineer, Roger Kovalarsik, claims to be unaccustomed to public speaking, but he was quite eloquent and erudite in his presentation. So we thank you. That brings us to unfinished business. Third reading of ordinance number 2018-016. And I will note that Mr. Jim Richard is in the audience, who is part of the property owners and also the attorney for the property owners. Before I get to Mr. Sanders, I will ask Ms. Paulo, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2018-016. An ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio to rezone land to R3 attached residential, R4 multifamily residential, C2 community commercial and C3 general commercial for property located on the south side of Smithville Western Road and east and west sides of Friendsville Road.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've had two previous discussions regarding this property and the rezoning application and request to rezone, I'm not sure that there's really much more that we can talk about. So I would motion to...
Adopt?
What's that?
Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2018-016.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any discussion, questions? And I should point out, too, we had a public hearing as well.
That's true.
So a lot of discussion on this matter. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bostansik. Yes. Ordinance number 2018-016 passes and to you, Mr. Richard, good luck on your endeavors here.
Thank you all for your attention, Mr. Sanders.
Look forward to seeing your future plans, Mr. Richard.
You will see us.
So turning to new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number 2018-018. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders and it's slated for three readings. Once again, I will ask Ms. Paulo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2018-018. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with representatives of the Worcester Employees Association regarding wages, benefits and terms and conditions of employment.
Mr. Sanders, I turn the floor back over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this ordinance this evening is related to the, it's a summary, I mean, on the second sheet of the packet related to this legislation, there's a summary memorandum of understanding. It's a one-year WEA contract extension. The city administration and the WEA have tentatively agreed to a one-year extension on the current contract. The contract was set to expire December 31st or the contract that expires on December 31st of 2019 would be extended until December 31st of 2020. It's agreed that all other aspects of the terms of the contract remain the same as the January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2019 collective bargaining agreement. And then the terms of the one-year extension are as followed. We have an hourly wage rate with 20 from January 1st on 2019 of a 2.5% wage increase. And then in January 1st of 2020, we have a 2.5 wage increase. Both of those are upon satisfactory performance evaluations and they, both of those wage increases match what we've already approved for the collective bargaining with police and fire. The next item is retirement incentive, which at this point, when a member of a bargaining unit has completed 27 years of service in the city of Worcester, he, she is eligible for a stipend of up to $2,000 per year, not to exceed $6,000 during the term of employment and no event shall be prepaid, or excuse me, but no event shall any prepayment be made after the 36-year anniversary. The language originally was removed in the previous contract, but because similar language was retained with police and fire, that's why it's being added back in. There was a change in vacation. Employees with at least one year of service may cash in a cured vacation once during any calendar year. Employees may cash in up to one-half their annual accrual and must maintain a minimum balance of 10 days. The cash-in rate was increased from 90% to 100% of their base daily hourly rate, again to match police, fire and management provisions. Severance pay was another item that had been changed or had been modified based on this. Upon retirement from city service, an employee with 10 or more years of service shall receive payment for his or her accumulated sick leave. Based upon the employee's rate of payment at retirement, the maximum payment shall be 33% of his or her accumulated sick leave, not to exceed a total of 600 hours. And such payment shall be made only once to any employee. And again, this was original language that was in a previous contract, had been removed and now is being placed back in based on the fact-finding report. And the last item is medical insurance and pharmacy benefits. Insurance premium rates and pharmacy benefits will remain the same for 2019 and 2020. Provision conforms insurance benefits for all city employees and other CBAs. The WA employees will also be eligible for voluntary employee-funded flexible medical spending accounts and dependent care reimbursement accounts options as it is available to management. So at that point, that's what we're looking at. I guess, do we have any questions? Ms. Myers?
Are you planning to leave this on first reading?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And again, if there's any questions that comes up, obviously you can either ask me or I would probably say it would be more beneficial to direct these questions to the, any questions you have for the administration in terms of the specifics of this. But I mean, it seems fairly straightforward, but in light of the fact that this is the first time we've seen it, I feel it would be prudent just to leave it on first reading.
Thank you.
Ms. Silvestri.
I just had one question about the stipend. When an employee reaches 27 years of service, they're eligible, but it doesn't sound like that's not paid out until when? And then the 36, that stops happening after 36 years of employment? Is that what that means?
I'll have to defer that question.
I wasn't clear on that when I read through there.
It sounds like it's an incentive to retire.
Okay, I got you.
It's been in the contract for a long, long time, back before I was in this position and possibly even back to Jane Howie was serving in the position. So it is sort of a way to maybe help people retire if they're interested. They have to, after 27 years, it's up to them to request this and then it usually is done in three successive years. If they get to the 36 year, then they can't do it. So they have to do it between the 27th and the 36th year. But it is purely up to them when they make that request. It's been something that was bargained into agreements, as I say, long ago.
So the stipend is only received if the person decides to retire?
No, not necessarily. It is, it was, and I am speaking just from rumor and innuendo, it passed down through time in the seat and knowing the other people that were here, that it was put in to help people build retirement income coming in. You know, the EDR system was based on and is still based on, it used to be the three top years of earning in the system and then it's now up to five years, the top five years of earning. That's about as much history as I can tell you on that.
Sure. I wasn't clear on if it was achieving the goal, if the incentive was achieving the goal. It just seemed like it's quite a perk, I gotta say.
It's always been in there. It's always been in the agreement as long as I can remember. It was in all three agreements, police, fire and WA. We attempted to negotiate it out. This, we were unable to do so, you know, in the police and fire contracts. And the last one went to arbitration and fact-finder who ruled specifically on that. So at that point, this is just an attempt to make all employees equal when it comes to their benefit.
Joel, this was a binding, excuse me, this was a binding, binding then from the fact-finder?
Yes, it was. That's the way the law is in Ohio.
So we really don't have much of a choice in the matter?
Well, no. The binding arbitration was not for the WEA. This is giving the WEA similar benefits to the police and fire. It was only, it was binding for them. We don't have to give it to the WEA unless, this was to make them consistent with the other ones. I mean, I think we should, since they're all, should all be the same, but...
I have a question. And actually, this sort of, I guess, harkens to Mr. Myers's response. I'm wondering, why do they all need to be the same? Were these changes requested or recommended by representatives of the bargaining unit? And I mean, is this just a means to streamline? Is this in line with other administrations of other cities of similar size?
Yeah, so anytime we're negotiating contracts, we always benchmark against other contracts. We collect all the data. Actually, the State Employee Relations Board provides a lot of that information for us. We let it down. They do it for the entire state. We try to look at cities that are comparable to us in size and location and makeup and character, those kinds of things. So yes, if we're very comparable to other municipalities, we have tended over the years to have the same benefits for all of our employees and we negotiate the same, we're using the same set of data. You know, really, the only difference is salaries, you know, for firemen are compared to firemen and police are compared to police and then the labor and trades are compared. Other than that, everything else has always been the same. It makes it very, a lot easier to manage benefits from an HR side if everybody's the same as opposed to different. And yes, the WA, after the negotiations were done with police and fire, WEA did ask about these. They brought it to us, can we inform these to everyone else in the city?
So essentially, it makes it easier for the WEA? I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just, to clarify, they can kind of wait for whoever's first in line to negotiate and see what they're able to achieve and then just mark that down and ask for the same thing?
No, they asked if they could have, they asked us about those benefits since we had just finalized contracts with police and fire. We asked them to extend the contract for a year because that makes that easier for us to just negotiate all of those so there is nobody going before anybody else.
Okay.
So that was our, for basically, well, we'll consider that, but you need to agree to extend this for a year. That way, everybody's the same. So everything else is the same as the other.
Yes. Thank you.
So they aren't getting that all at once.
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Sanders. We'll consider ordinance 2018-018 as having its first reading. Ordinance number 2018-019. This will be Mr. Sanders as well. And it is slated for three readings. So if you would, Ms. Paulo, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2018-019. An ordinance amending Chapter 162 Management Benefits of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Worcester, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, again, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have here is amending Chapter 162 of our management benefits of the codified Some of these items, at this point, we've seen, we just discussed in the previous legislation. There's not a lot. There's sections that have been changed, some minor verbiage has changed. At this particular point, in terms of trying to go through this tonight, I think it might be prudent, again, we're gonna leave it on first reading anyways, but to, you know, review this, review this on our own time and at that point, we can have a much more educated discussion next time unless someone has some major questions now. But like I say, at this point, my intent was to leave this on first reading this evening anyways. But basically, what we're doing, like I say, is a lot of, a lot of what we're seeing in here is in fact, is the items that we just discussed are just putting those back into ordinance form so that at that point, we're all, we have everything operational on the same page.
All right. We'll consider ordinance number 2018-019 as having its first reading.
If it's too late, Mr. President, I can save it. I just had one question.
Go ahead.
One thing I just wanted to call out, and that is, I know I had asked a question on the retirement incentive stipend and the one on this next piece of legislation. I read that in the third paragraph down in the description, and it does say all other employees with at least 18 years of service are also eligible for a stipend of 1,000 per year, max 6,000. So I wasn't sure how those two coordinate.
Police and fire are eligible for their retirement incentive after 18 years. WA management had always been 27 years. So if you have at least 18, that was just sort of lumping, you know, everyone in the city together, at least 18, which is police and fire.
But we're still not all on the same page in terms of the details.
Police and fire are 18. What we were asking for WEA and management was 27. And I believe that's, is there a reference? There might have been. There might have been a reference. Yeah. Those numbers were already there, so we weren't changing. These would sunset January 1st, 19, if we don't make the revisions.
Okay. The only real change was that it, now it's gonna stay. So it would've gone away in 2019. Now, if you pass, for that section, for that section of it, if you pass this, then it stays in place, which is in line with what is going with the WEA contract.
Okay. But this is for non-union employees, correct?
Correct.
Do you think we can get a list of all the employees this is affected by?
I'm sure. For management or management and WEA?
Management. Because it's, could we, could we have a list, too, of all those that are in management that make more than the highest-paid WEA employee?
Assuming we could do that. I assume so, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm asking, I think that would be helpful to the council in terms of looking at who it affects and who's, you know, if we're comparing apples to apples, who in the management area makes more than the highest-paid WEA employee?
Because management is management supervisory, administrative, and so, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of positions that aren't necessarily...
Well, I get that. It's not all non-union employees. I get that.
Is that classified and unclassified or?
There's a combination.
Yeah.
Okay. So all unclassified are not necessarily not in the WEA? If you're an unclassified compensated city of Worcester employee, you're not necessarily not in the WEA. There could be some crossover?
Yes.
Because as an example, clerk of courts in the WEA?
No.
Clerk of council.
Clerk of council, excuse me, not courts.
Clerk of council was an SCNA employee.
Okay. Administrative assistant to the mayor?
Correct. SCNA employee.
Okay. All right. Well, then it looks like Section 5.03 of our ordinances that lists unclassified, those are probably the people you're talking about. Okay.
Well, I get that. I would just, well, list to list and one, one it broken down to how many make more than the WEA highest-paid and who may make, you know, just need to know who makes more than that.
Right.
Then the rest speaks for itself. I just, that'd be interesting if we keep always telling, saying, you know, let's compare apples to apples. Let's compare apples to apples.
Mr. Biden, I keep wanting the list of everybody that would be eligible for that stipend as well, so someone that hasn't met.
No, no. I was wondering, want a list of all who were eligible... No, no, I was wondering, want a list of all who were eligible, who are covered under this ordinance.
Okay, so you just want who's covered under the ordinance, not who's eligible for that stipend?
Right, and then who on that list makes more than the highest paid WEA employee that's covered under the proposed contract, which I suggest that hopefully Mr. Sanders will vote on, have it, we vote on it next. Not this one, but the one with the WEA. I always like to make sure that, you know, we appreciate the efforts of the unions, you know, being agreeable and having a, it's always nice to postpone having to do contracts, so. And they, obviously, the administration did a good job to get it extended for a year. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Sanders?
I do not.
Anything else? All right, we'll consider ordinance twenty eighteen day zero nineteen as having its first reading. Turn our attention to resolution twenty, number twenty eighteen day zero six one. This will be presented by Mr. Bestancic. I have it slated for three readings. So before we get to you, Mr. Bestancic, I will ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title of the resolution.
Resolution number twenty eighteen oh six one, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to issue payment for services rendered with various vendors and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bestancic, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you. This resolution authorized payment of four hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-three cents to the North Oak Southern Railway for their involvement in our twenty fifteen East Liberty paving project. These funds are, are to pay for the costs involved in coordinating with the railway and paving within the right of way. ODOT requires coordination whenever using funds for ODOT and dealing with the railway. This, we are, we are obligated to pay this amount even though, from an agreement we signed in twenty fourteen stating that the city will, shall reimburse the railroad for all applicable construction and engineering costs. We didn't know ahead of time what the cost would be until after the project was done, but we did sign an agreement to pay for that. Apparently, they use people for, I guess, when you work on the roads. I'm talking to Roger about this, like, for spotters, I guess, if you're paving near the right of way, they'll be looking for trains or.
I don't know what else they did use. You had several lists.
It's whenever you, when you're using federal funds and a railroad's involved, and you're working inside the railroad right of way. There are certain things you need to do, and the railroad has to have flaggers there and a list of other things. We have, we have since learned to do that part of paving ourselves, so we stay out of the right of way, but, yeah. And, and this is the same railroad who won't paint their railroad trestles, but they'll gladly let us paint it for them.
Yeah, I was, I actually forgot all about it until the bill came.
Yeah.
Maybe we should forget about this bill until our bridges are painted.
Yeah, I was going to say, they took the time, signed us a bill.
My caution is, don't fight with the railroads.
Yeah, I've always found trains always win. So, yeah, we're obligated to pay it, so.
I would like to suspend the rules and put this up there in file.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bestancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yeah.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. Mr. Bestancic, you have another question? Motion to adopt by Mr. Bestancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion? Pretty cut and dry. Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty eighteen day zero six one passes. Resolution number twenty eighteen day zero six two will be presented by Mr. Silvestri. My note says it's budgeted, so suspension of the rules will not be necessary. What is necessary is for Mr. Apollo, if she would, to read the title.
Resolution number twenty eighteen oh six two, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a new sanitary sewer serving West Liberty Street near Oak Hill Road.
Mr. Silvestri, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So there's a portion of, it's the western portion of West Liberty Street near Oak Hill Road, where there are seven homes, many of which, all, all of which currently have septic systems, many of which are failing, and there are some environmental concerns with that. So this is a resolution to establish a new segment of sanitary sewer for that area. It will cover all seven of these homes, as well as eliminating a private lift station. And there's always challenges that come along with lift stations for our sewer system. So I'm glad to hear that that will be eliminated, and it's a, it's a, an eliminated risk. We'll put it at, leave it at that. But this will involve one thousand three hundred sixty lineal feet of eight-inch PVC sanitary line. And there's going to also be five manholes in conjunction with this project. A very necessary project, but I would say a relatively small sanitary sewer addition for our city. And I, I'm not required to keep this on first reading this evening, so with that, I will move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. Any discussion?
Any questions? Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, I was just curious with this, is, are the homeowners, I mean, you see there's seven homes that are going to be serviced by this, are they going to be paying any portion of this cost?
They'll have to pay tap-in fee, availability fee, tap-in fee.
So they'll pay roughly eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's fifty-two dollars per, in this case, rear, front foot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, so again, so it's less than that, then, because it's sixty-foot lot?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does that mean, per household, we're looking at almost thirty-six thousand dollars per household, and they're, they're going to only pay? Okay. Thank you.
John, did you?
That was actually my question. Thanks.
These are in the city of Worcester?
Yes, yes, they are.
And we let them get away with these, septic?
There, yeah, there's several others that the county's trying to clean up along with the city.
I can understand if they didn't live out, if they lived, lived outside of the municipal limits like someone else I know. But was forced to annex in. I was just making sure we weren't missing an annexation portion here.
Have a quick question.
Mr. Bestancic?
Once the lines put in, are they obligated to tap into it?
Yes.
Actually, they probably were obligated to tap in a long time ago.
Yeah, there just wasn't any line to tap in.
Right, right. This is finally extended out, that, we're going to extend it out far enough to catch them.
Yeah, this, this is one that's been on the list for decades to do.
So, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I was just curious, what, what happens with their, the leachment? Do they fill that in, or do we fill that in, or?
They fill in the septic tank.
They're required to get a permit from the county health department to, to properly abandon their.
It's a, it's usually a fill-in crush, right? Crush failures.
The issue is that the, the septics are failing now.
Yeah. We don't usually hear anything about septics, so we're kind of, very few left.
Where's the affluent flow? In a little creek there, or who knows? Out on the street into our storm sewer?
I have a question, Roger. You, you said that this is something we've been anticipating for quite some time. Have the homeowners been notified in advance that this, this is coming down the pipe?
Correct, yes, yes. We actually have to get easements from the owners to put the line in, so.
To bring it full.
Yeah, they, they've been notified.
And that's, that's why we, we are where we are tonight, because you've, you've acquired those easements, right?
I think we have one or two to, two to left to get, that the plans are finished. I just want to be able to bid it as soon as we get the last easement.
Is it being received positively by the homeowners in the area?
Yes, I, I haven't heard any negative.
Okay.
Well, it's a, is a heck of a lot less than if they had to put in a new septic system. Which is any, lately anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars. Wouldn't have been permitted, but they're getting off cheap. Or inexpensively, I should say, so. And they're getting helped out because they're stuck otherwise.
I want to thank Roger and his department for doing all the engineering design, administering the construction, managing the project, and they'll be inspecting it as well, all, all in-house, so thanks.
I don't see anything further, so would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number twenty eighteen day zero sixty-two passes. Resolution number twenty eighteen day zero six three, this will be Mr. Bestancic's. It is slated for three readings, and if you would, Mr. Apollo, please read the title.
Resolution number twenty eighteen oh six three, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for resurfacing and repairing portions of Beaver Street, Cleveland Road, Bell Avenue, and Wayne Avenue, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bestancic, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We saw this earlier in the Infrastructure Committee meeting, where for a, part of a proposal for twenty nineteen, this is a resolution to request to authorize an order contract for resurfacing and repairing pavement on the following roads. It would be Beaver Street from Bowman to Cleveland, Wayne Avenue from Beaver to Bell, Bell, Bell Avenue from Bloomington Road to Cleveland Road, and Cleveland Road from Highland to the Dix Expressway. This project will involve the milling of existing surfaces, adjusting manholes and water valve boxes to grade, and placing new asphalt pavement markings. Projected cost is eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, with four hundred twenty-eight thousand coming from ODOT, ODOT large city funds, and four hundred twenty-two thousand come from the city. And again, all engineering, design, construction, administration, and inspection will be performed in-house by our engineering department, and this project is slated for twenty nineteen, and funding will be included in the nineteen, twenty nineteen appropriation budget. About it, Roger.
This digresses a little bit. Are they putting new catch basins in on Bell at the moment? What's all the construction?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it was the old type of catch basins, and we're, we're putting in the newer model for lack of a better.
Yeah, this is one of those, which are like cast iron and.
Right, right. And we're just, we're doing all that in preparation for this project.
Mm-hmm. I, I thought that was going on. Finally, finally, we've opened up the road enough so I can get, get up there, so it looked like it was all new catch bases. Should be nice once it's paved. Anything further? You have a motion for us?
Yes, I would like to put this on third and final, as sooner we get the proposal in, the better this should be.
All right, motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the role on the suspension of the rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Mr. Bestancic, turn to you again.
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bestancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
All right, resolution number twenty eighteen day zero six three passes. Our final resolution and piece of legislation is resolution number twenty eighteen day zero six four. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers. It is slated for three readings. Would you please call, read the title, Mr. Apollo?
Resolution number twenty eighteen oh six four, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to fill the swimming pool at the Ellen Shapiro Nettorium at Worcester High School for twenty eighteen, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Mr. Myers, take it away. That's all yours, last piece of legislation.
Well, thank you. I don't think this is going to require a great deal of conversation. We did pass a resolution on, back in December of twenty seventeen regarding this particular filling of the pool with, with city water during their renovation. If you haven't been up to see what they did up there, it's, it's really quite impressive. They, they raised an awful lot of money. They painted the entire facility. Chris Matthews has been, is now the named of, of arena, which is really pretty, pretty cool. She's currently the swim coach, and they spent, I think it was fifteen hundred gallons of paint to paint just the inside of the room, not including inside the bottom of the pool, which is also painted, but it's a really neat feature. It's, it looks just outstanding. So we're even just bringing people to our community. I know the mayor and the Wayne Economic Development Council will bring different prospective businesses through, and that's often part of the tour. I will say, it's now an impressive part of the tour. Again, it was starting to look a little dated. So this is something we'd all agreed to do back in December. This is authorizing our finance fair to expend the payment for the water. I believe, if I remember, probably you may know, six hundred and fifty-some thousand gallons, I believe. It took about a week to fill.
Yeah, and I tried to, I think the pool capacity is eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
Based on eight hundred thousand gallons, about seventy-four hundred dollars.
Okay. Anyway, it was, if there's any questions, we can certainly discuss it further, but if not, I'm going to go ahead and, since it's actually already, it was full this morning when I was there, so I'm assuming that was our water. I'm going to ask to move this to third, third and final reading.
All right, the motion by Mr. Myers to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rule?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bestancic. Any discussion?
What is the two thousand dollars per year in court?
Oh, sorry about that, didn't mention. One of the things we, that they offered, and when we were talking with them, was we do have, the, the Parks Department has basketball tournaments and events up there that we utilize those basketball courts across from the pool. It's, forget the name of the.
The gulf.
Is that gulf, the gulf, the track area where those basketball courts are? And so they have offered, rather than, in lieu of charging us the rental, court rental that they have charged us generally, they're going to give us those credits for, for how many years it is, so. Again, it was just something kind of working together to be a partner.
Oh geez, I was just going to say, can't we make this contentious on Michael Teffs wearing a tutu and swimming at least a lap in the new pool now that it's filled as part of the payment?
I don't really anticipate wanting to see, Dr.
That's a good question, Andre. Andre, are we basically moving funds from one department to another on this? Is that how that works?
Just credit the bill, seven hundred dollars, and then instead of every year, we won't get a bill for two thousand bucks for running the goal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a credit on their account.
It's just a credit.
Yeah, I mean, they technically took the water and built the pool.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I forgot to mention the basketball court.
There was some quick pro.
There was, and Mr. Batic was very appreciative of that gesture. There was, and Mr. Batic was very appreciative of that gesture.
I don't think anyone on council begrudges us providing water to our own school system.
Yeah, we make water every day.
Yeah. So seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018 day 064 passes. That concludes the legislative portion, and we now roll into the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start with Ms. Warden.
I would just like to say congratulations, Mr. Mayor, it's exciting that your daughter is married now, and that's, yeah, that's about all I have, thanks for-
Thank you, Mr. Ansel.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Kevin?
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on your new son. And I wanted to thank Roger also for the presentation, knowledge is best, thank you.
Mr. Bastancic?
I'd just like to thank Roger again, too, you know, a lot of hard work goes into that, we appreciate it.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, yes, congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Also, Roger, well done on the presentation, and Kurt Denning and his team as well, for all the work you guys do, appreciate it. I also attended the tour of 180, it was fun to learn about all the different things they provide to our community as far as services and things. I will note, they are currently finishing up a fund drive to build a building, I own off of Noble Drive there, off of Back Orville, and expand services at their facility here in town, so if you're interested, they're still looking for donations, so that's coming along well. They're going to break ground, Campbell Construction has been awarded the contract for the building, and they'll be breaking ground probably this month or early November, so. Appreciate Chief Fisher, Assistant Chief Rotolo, for attending that tour along with the mayor and Jennifer Warden as well, so thank you for setting that up. The Freedom Front dinner on Saturday night was really, well, well-attended, I enjoyed going. Jennifer bought a cake, but she was, I went up to $100 for a cake, and I didn't get one, so we tried, my table tried, rather, so. Just certainly also want to congratulate Lawrence Walker, he was provided an award in honor that night, and it was just, it was a great, great event up at the College of Worcester, so, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
I have nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Silvestri?
Just wanted to thank Roger for the informative committee meeting. Great information, great oratory, and your public, and your public speaking skills, so certainly appreciate it. I know that's not something Roger enjoys doing, but I appreciate the information. It's one of the things I get most asked about, probably, is, is road construction projects, so it's nice to have this information in our fingertips. And I'll be able to, I'll bother you with questions a little less now that I have this up-to-date info, thanks.
And I see Mr. Ansel's moved to adjourn, is there a second? Mr. Myers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.